All right. Good evening. I'd like to call this Thursday, January 21st. Study session of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors. Order. And we have three items on our agenda tonight. And just to, in the interest of time, we're just going to jump right in. So item 2.1, Annual Continuous Achievement Plans Report.
So I'm going to ask Ms. Pace and her crew to take us through what the schools are doing to make sure they continue the improvement, the school improvement about. So Tony, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you Superintendent Santorno. Good evening, President Cobb and Vice President Von Bride and the other directors as well. I would like to do a quick introduction of tonight's speakers. We have Doug Hostetter, who's the Director of Secondary Education, Scott Rich, who's the Director of Elementary Education, Julie Ray, another Director of Elementary Education, and Krista Erlelin, Director of School Programs. I'd also like to do a quick shout out to Assistant Superintendent Marie Verhar and Director of Student Data Science and Analytics, Zeke Edmonds, who are also part of our team and visit schools and help support principals and teachers in the buildings. So is the PowerPoint up? We have a PowerPoint to walk you through tonight. And there we go. So the first slide here, I especially like this slide a lot. I wanted to draw your attention to the diagram of the process, which is the circle. Because this is a continuous plan. It never really ends. It's always being changed and brought up to date. And we respond to the data. So as you can see in each circle, we first analyze data. We develop action plans around that data with our principals and teachers. We implement those action plans and then we improve those action plans by visiting them on a quarterly basis. And then the whole process starts all over again. Next slide, please. So why do we do this? Well, first and foremost, it's required by law for each school to have a school improvement plan. And we are also focusing on a continuous improvement piece that we want to make sure that we support with our schools. And in addition to focusing on a continuous improvement, we also support our strategic plan and benchmarks. And we, you know, we've made a promise to our students to provide them with an academic program to help prepare them for their futures. And as we look in the mirror, we want to look and see what things we can do better as a system as well. It's not just upon the students, but it's about us and how we can change our practice to meet their needs. And we want to be effective and efficient with setting educational goals. And of course, as always, our commitment is to never stop learning for both our adults, learners, as well as our children. The next slide, please, and I'm going to turn this over to Director Scott Rich.
Good afternoon, everybody. Scott Rich, again, Director of Elementary Education. So we're going to kind of start with the big picture and then we'll get you into the details a little bit. But I guess I want to start by saying that coming into this work, school plans historically, it's been difficult for schools to really have them be plans that are alive and they're using, you know, every day. And so that was really one of the driving goals, that the CAP Plan would be a systemic approach. And it would be a plan that was active and alive in every school, in Tacoma Public Schools. And that these plans also are a way to really involve the key stakeholders in each school in the work through setting goals. So the foundation for every CAP Plan across the school district is our strategic plan. So the goals are set in accordance with the strategic plan. And every school identifies goals based upon the work that they outline that they need to do. And that works revisited throughout the year. So this is a plan that's alive and well in every school across the district. Next slide. I'm going to take you back a little bit. So when we started this work, I guess it's been four years now and we're in our third year of actual implementation of the CAP Plan process. But this takes us back to four years ago, our planning year, when we really recognized that we needed to do better, that the work that we were doing in terms of school plans wasn't an alive and vibrant process. So we knew we needed to do better. We also really knew we needed to challenge some of our beliefs and practices across the district. We spent a lot of time analyzing existing processes and plans. And we studied, I think, plans from five districts across the nation, plans that seemed to be gaining traction in those districts and pulling out those key elements that might work in Tacoma. We did work to identify what was already working in Tacoma. And there's a lot that was working and those were pieces that we wanted to keep. A big part of the work was really digging into the data and reviewing kind of school and then that student group data. So what student groups across each school and across the district were struggling the most? Because the intent of the CAP Plan was to really get at improvements within those student groups. And then the work was really to design a process and design plans that principals and teacher teams and schools could use to close those gaps. So now we're going to kind of dig in. Julie and I are going to share some examples of what some actual CAP Plans look like this year. And this is where we'll really bring you up to speed because some things have changed this year. It's been a little bit of a different year. So we've got two examples. Julie, I think both Larchmont. And this year, we've added an attendance goal. And we have known all along that it's really important to get our kids there, right? To engage our students, to have them coming on remotely. And now to get our kindergarteners coming into school. So every school has identified an attendance goal. So when you look at this slide, how it's laid out is it shows what the goal is. And for Larchmont, they've identified that they are shooting for 92% attendance. And then they have a description of the goal, which is where they have laid out kind of where they were and where specifically they're feeling like they need to make some improvements. So here, they're really looking at a focus on kindergarten and second grade. And then the cool part of these plans is every school really digs deep and creates a couple of action steps where they lay out specific work targeted at their population and their school that's going to get at that goal, really drive at that. And then there's a, so you'll see in there, they've got two things. One has to do with weekly attendance team meetings. And the other has to do with communications with teachers on students of concern and then really reaching out to those families. And then there's always a part where we're measuring the goal and a part where schools are laying out what resources are needed to help them. And those resources could involve a variety of things. And often that's where we can plug in district support or other people who can really step in and assist schools in this work. So that's an example of what attendance is looking like. And we've really been pushing attendance hard this year. Next slide.
Hey, and I'm Julie Ray, the other Director of Elementary Ed. And I'm going to walk you through an example of an academic goal. So each school has, just like Scott mentioned, we added attendance this year because we knew that was critical. But we've kept the academic goals. So every school has an ELA goal, English Language Arts, and a math goal. And as you know, we didn't have our state assessment, our ESPA, last spring. So we usually use that as the data analysis. We used iReady this year, which is our district assessment. And as you see, this is an example of a fifth grade ELA goal. So it's really written like a SMART goal. It's specific, it's measurable, actionable. And what I like about the goals is they actually, you'll see the students is blank. In the plan, they have the student names listed. We just had to take that part out, but that's the critical part. How many students are they? You know, when we're looking at student groups and what's our goal of moving students? Because when we know students by name, what their strengths are, what are the gaps? We can move kids. So the student part has always been a really important part of our CAP process. You'll see, just like attendance, we have a description. And in this example, they're using our iReady assessment and really drilling down to a priority standard, to this one's main idea and details. And then a piece that we've really pushed from the beginning with CAP is around these action steps. And the action steps are intended to be above and beyond core instruction. Because we know when we have a group of students that have specific gaps, we want to nail down what's the standard and skill that they need. And then a schedule per week. How many times per week is the teacher going to work with this child in a, you know, second dose? And then the actual minutes. So you'll see that the times per week are called out with the minutes as well as the priority standard. And then teachers are also hitting what instructional strategy that they're using. So we've worked as a CAP team on developing a rubric around action steps that then principals have rolled out. So the big thing I've noticed with this process, like Scott said, over the past three years, that first year was the planning year. Principals have really built that leadership capacity. You know, the first year of CAP, principals modeled the way of digging into the data and helping with action steps. But teachers are really owning this work now and principals are giving feedback on it. And then we have the measures for the goal. So like Scott mentioned before, a traditional school improvement plan was written at the beginning of the year. The CAP is ongoing. So they have a progress monitoring system. They're talking as a team, what assessments are we going to give? How many? And tracking that data. Next slide, please.
And Julie, I do want to say this is, these are not plans that are written for teachers. These are plans written by teacher teams, by leadership teams. So every grade level is really digging in and creating the goals along with their school leadership, their school leadership team and their principal, so.
And so the next component that we have are school check-ins. And this is really, the purpose is to provide that systematic approach to meet and exceed our strategic plan goals and benchmarks. So as level directors, we meet with all of our schools. So we met, you know, after they finished the CAP, we gave them specific feedback on tweaks and revisions and what that data progress monitoring system will look like. We also have at the end of quarters, and the quarters were a bit revised this year, based on the year, but we have principals that will then get together in triads with other principals and district directors and will share the results of their data. So looking at, you know, again, what was that goal, the action steps? And then how did we do? And what adjustments do we need to make? And they get feedback from each other. It just helps, just like with professional learning communities, with teachers. It helps principals as well, just to learn from each other. And then we have our comprehensive and targeted schools, which Doug will go over those specific schools on the next couple of slides. But we have our district CAP team that visits our comprehensive and targeted schools. Last week, we just visited Jason Lee. And it's about hour and a half, two hours. We get to know the principal shares a data dive of trends and data. We discuss Schoology implementation, grading. And then we have the opportunity to visit a couple of classrooms. And with look fours that we calibrate on and come back and also hear about the leadership moves of that principal and then celebrate and give specific feedback. So that's always been a highlight is to hear about the practice and to see that in action. Next slide, please. And then we have, traditionally, we have four quarters. So it's been adjusted a bit this year. But we have, again, those check-ins with principals. And that's where they meet in triads or individually with level directors. And we just look at the results of every grade level. We talk about what leadership changes will you make as a result of this data. A real critical one is how do you continue to guide the team to refine those action steps and to get clear about what is that specific skill that we need to focus on? And then really helping principals guide their teams. Like Scott said before, it's teachers creating the goals and action plans. So being in that place where principals are those instructional leaders and guiding and helping along the way. And then an important piece, we always ask, what supports do you need from us and our team to do this work? And are looking at ways that we can just partner with our school. And then next slide.
All right. Good evening. Doug Hostetter, Secondary Education. And so this slide, just to clear up acronyms. So folks at home that are watching the presentation, OSPI is the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction. And OSSI is the Office of School and Office of School Support. Office of School and Systems Instruction Support is what OSSI does. And so when you look at this, first of all, I want to make it clear, as Scott and Julie said, with the CAP process, we ask schools or require schools, all schools, to complete a CAP. And so we're just going to look at today, the comprehensive and targeted schools. But no, just like we ask teachers to differentiate instruction for students, we kind of differentiate the level of support we provide schools depending on their status. So we have comprehensive schools, which means those schools are schools that have a number of student groups that are underperforming a predetermined threshold that OSPI determines. And so if they are underachieving that threshold in a number of groups, they're considered to be comprehensive. They're a targeted school, and this, to be accurate, should say targeted three plus school. Because these are schools that are identified for three or more student groups that are underperforming the designated threshold. And so, and the thresholds determines a three-year average. And it, the last three years data set, like Julie said, there wasn't an SBA in spring of 2020. But there was in 1918, 17. So how OSPI came up with these designated schools is based on the 17, 18, and 19 school years, since we didn't have a SBA in the spring of 2020. So there's our comprehensive schools, there's our targeted schools. When we go and visit, as Julie and Scott were talking about, we're very intentional at looking at the student, at the school's data and making sure that we, as directors of those schools, are providing the supports the principal needs to give their teachers, who then obviously give it to students. So that's just some background, what comprehensive schools and what targeted three plus schools are. Next slide. And school visits. So there's our comprehensive schools. We really work, the CAP team, which Julie and Scott talked about. We visit the schools, we look at their data, we look, we go through classrooms. We see the instructional moves the teachers are making, the leadership moves that the principals are making, provide feedback based on the data and what we observe in the schools. Targeted schools, very similar, we visit them as well. Like Julie said, we've visited a comprehensive school last week. We're going to see another targeted three plus school tomorrow. And we, you know, we ask them, what do they need from the district? And if they need, let's just say, a support with ELL or English Language Learners, we alert the ELL director that you need, you would be wise to go to that school and offer the supports that your department can offer. All right. Next slide. Now it's Krista, I believe.
It is. Good evening. Krista Erlelin, Director of School Programs. You know, we've been at this, I think, that's right. I think this is our fourth year. Our first year was a planning year. So we've been working through this for the last three years. And we've learned a lot and we've continued to learn. And that's really the nature of the plan itself, right? Is that continuous learning for us and for students. So we, I think we've learned that the more specific we can be, the better the outcome will be. So we've, we started out with a pretty specific plan, which is unique to us, I think, in that we have specific students named, specific standards named, specific strategies named. And those things are, they're identified and implemented. And then we monitor the results of those. And of course, the more specific we are, the more challenging it is to manage all those pieces. It just becomes a lot more complex. So I think we've learned that we know we need to be specific. And we still have learning to do about how to manage all of that data and to turn it around in a way that's quick and meaningful. This is, you're reflecting on one quarter's success. You're already starting planning, have written your next quarter. So we're just, we're getting a rhythm and, and we'll just continue to work on that. You know, our rhythm was slightly interrupted this year, but, but we're at the work and we're still doing it. I think the other thing that we've learned is that small group, this really happens in small group. It doesn't happen in the, in the large whole group lesson that you typically see in a classroom. It really happens in small groups. And interestingly, I think that the teams, classrooms, and remote learning have allowed teachers to either experiment or become a little bit stronger, play around with the notion of small group in ways that they might not have had they been in the physical, in-person learning. So I'm, I think that's been a little bit of new learning for us. And, and I, and that's one of the things that, if we go to the next slide, it's one of the things that I think we want to reflect on and examine is what are the things that we've learned this year primarily that we want to carry forward when all of this is done? So where have we have some surprising positive results, like the small group, the frequency of small group or learning the value of small group? And what other things have we learned in through this process? And I certainly think it's more of a, we've learned some lessons about personalizing learning and delivering it, students, what they need in a smaller, more intimate setting. And so being able to figure out how to carry some of that forward will be helpful. So we'll be reaching out and asking principals. And I'm sure principals will be asking staff, you know, what do we want to carry forward with us? What have we learned that we don't want to let go of? And we, of course, will be making them, the plans available for you to review. And that will be also a next step. And we're continuing our virtual visits. We have another one tomorrow. And, and those will be, are always a great learning experience for us. So those will continue to be a valuable part of the process, always, being in classrooms and visiting and collaborating and supporting principals in the work that they do. And I think, I think that the next slide is Tony.
Well, thank you all. I see that we're at the point of questions. So I just want to thank you all for the presentation and opening up the board members to provide comments or questions. Unless you had something else to offer, Tony, or are we going to questions?
We're just going on to questions.
Okay, thank you. I'll start with Director Strozer. Do you have any comments or questions tonight?
No, no specific questions, just comments. Obviously, I just want to say thank you for the work that's been done to not only put this presentation together, but to work towards continuous achievement. I know that there's a saying out there, and I can't remember who says it, but the saying is, you can't know, a map does you no good if you don't know where you are on it. And what I appreciate about this is it's grounded in data. It was meant to mention multiple times that it's almost, it's almost, almost so much data that turning it around becomes difficult. But I think that that's a good problem to have. It's all, I think it's, it's always beneficial to work with the data that you have in comparison to just making decisions based off of emotions and what you think is a great option. So I just want to say thank you. I want to dive into this a little bit more, just to have a better understanding of exactly what's going on. But you guys did a great job breaking it down. So no questions, just thank you for the work.
Thank you. Director Keating, any questions or comments?
I have just a couple. I have, yes, a little bit. So I'm curious, is, I'm realizing that my very first study session on the board was this topic a year ago. So I feel like I kind of have a better handle on things. But is, and I may have asked this last year too, but is the CAP a replacement of the school improvement plan?
Yes.
Yes. The CAP serves as our school improvement plan, correct.
Okay, okay. And then the attendance, so I think, I think it was Larchmont, Larchmont, the attendance goal, it was like 92%. And that, I wanted to just clarify, that's like the entire school year there? The goal is 92% attendance? Is that, am I understanding that right?
We break it down, we call it average daily attendance. So it's the average over, over time. But the goal would be to have 92% averaged overtime, right? So, yeah. So and typically, you know, especially this year, that's been a real push. And so 92%, Julie, you can weigh in for Larchmont, but it's an ambitious goal.
Yeah, and they, Larchmont wrote the goal specifically at that time, that was in October. So they will revise that, you know, with the new quarter change. But they were specifically looking at kindergarten and first grade because at the time that was written, access was, was getting in the way. Their attendance was lower at those grades, but it's improved dramatically. I will say that principals have attendance teams and have been on it with, you know, reaching out to families, doing everything they can, you know, even before the computer. So we've definitely seen gains in that area.
Excellent. Thank you. And then my last question. So in terms of the CAP goals that are set, what are the accountabilities, like what kinds of accountabilities are in place to support either teachers or buildings that haven't reached their goals?
Who wants to take that one on?
Multi-pronged. So when we think about accountability, there's the public accountability about, these are public-facing documents. And they're, the teams have to revise their goals. So there's a lot of reasons why their goals, and so they're quarterly and they're updated and revised quarterly. Principals tie their goals, their evaluation goals to there, in there. But one of the things that we recognize when we were designing this process, school achievement is shared accountability, right? It's not just one person in there. So this is not to say that one teacher didn't do their job or one grade level didn't do their job or their school. It's really saying, we didn't meet our goal. And so what are we going to do different? How do we hold ourselves accountable as a team to support staff with different resources, better resources in there? And so this idea of continuous improvement is fostered amongst everyone. And so the accountability is shared, everyone down to when the superintendent reviews them and says, what am I going to do differently to support these schools?
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for, I'll let others go. Thank you.
Director Leon, any questions or comments?
Yeah, thanks for just reviewing so the public understands that the way we really improve the schools and the education is a continuous process, as you've talked about. So, and having things that are manageable and then acting on them frequently in small groups, as you mentioned, is really a smart way to do this. So I've got definition or, you know, kind of terminology question. You did define the comprehensive versus targeted. The targeted was, were schools that had more than three places that were underperforming. And comprehensive had, I thought, I thought the number was a number of areas that were underperforming. But what is the, is there a threshold? Is one more than three and one less than three?
There is a threshold. The, the state takes all the schools, puts them on a continuum, and then develops a threshold, which right now it's 2.3. So any school, when you look at all their student groups and you put them together, if they exceed, if they underperform that threshold, I said it was 2.3. So let's say it's 2.2. For all those student subgroups or majority of the student subgroups, For all those student subgroups or majority of the student subgroups, they'd be classified as comprehensive. If they're underperforming that threshold in three students groups, then they would be targeted three plus. And we didn't, I mean, I didn't mention it in my slide, but if if they're underperforming in any student group, they are a targeted school for that student group. So the goal is to improve the education for all our students.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does, it does, huh? Got you. And the uh, and each school is evaluating themselves on a quarterly basis. I mean, they're continuing to be working on this, but you sometimes you can't look at data every day, obviously, um, as as a teacher or a principal on. Um, uh, even though we say we'd like to, you have to kind of go back and do work and reevaluate later. So it's quarterly is what I've heard.
Correct.
Yeah, and I think like Julie shared, I mean, you didn't see it because we removed student names, but you know. Part of the beauty of this is that these plans and these goals really are specific to kids. I would say I've seen teacher teams, you know, digging in very frequently, right? Weekly, monthly, they're really uh checking in on the goals and addressing what students need. But then as a, as a school, we're asking them uh to review quarterly.
And there was one uh mentioned, one of the slides said students need more, not just core. Um, what is that quote uh specifically uh referencing? Need more of, yeah, more of.
That's a, that's a great question and that's really the foundation of the plan is that uh all children should have, right? Uh, are entitled to core instruction, right? Your basic program of uh our curriculum, our standards are delivered to every student. But we're not going to close gaps with just core, right? They need more and some kids need more. So that's where we start seeing small groups and the targeted, um, to use that in a different way. The targeted focused interventions and supports in small group in addition to core instruction, not in place of it, but in addition.
Okay, so it's not a reference to more like athletics, extracurricular activity, although that that could count as some of that, but more um. Uh, targeted uh learning around the math issue.
Okay, yes, whatever they need, yep.
Okay, thanks, talk about it.
Director Bombay.
Well, thank you, um, everyone. I thought that presentation was really informative and and like Director Keating, last year was uh also my first hearing about this. And so I've had a, some time to resonate with the information. It makes a lot more sense this year, so um, thank you. Um, I I've got a a couple of questions. One, first of all, I want to say I appreciate um the integrated structure of this model. Um, like um Tony Pace was saying at the beginning, I mean, I I really appreciate the cyclical nature of it and how it's consistent. And I, I think um, and and I think Krista was also talking about, you know, over time, it takes practice and and over time, you're getting better and better at it. So I want to appreciate that and and um I'm a visual person, so I love to see, you know, those things are so obvious to me when I see them visually, so thanks for that. Um, the second was, I'm interested in hearing more, um, not necessarily tonight, but over time, uh, about some of this small group work. Uh, I love the concept and the recognition that um student, you know, student uh improvement happens in small groups, you know. More regularly and and more specifically. And and I love that the teachers are finding uh one a benefit of of some of this online learning because they can do small group work in way that, in ways that they haven't in before. And I think that um at least there's, you know, one good benefit from from something we've learned from being online and not in the same classroom. Um, and and I, I'm I'm wondering how we're going to capture some of those lessons learned from teachers around how best to work with certain students. Around, uh, uh, personally, um, and how we can integrate that when we are back in classrooms full time. How we can integrate some of that, uh, those lessons learned to make sure that those students that are succeeding in that way. Uh, we could use smart, small classes, you know, asynchronously um to help improve their time um as well. Um, and so, um, so that was, I just want to capture some of this COVID experience in a way that we can apply it when we get back, back in. Because personalized learning is the goal and I, and um, and I, I think that's the point. Um, and the third part is um. How are we going to capture some of those same thi- thinking and also the data differential when we start segueing into in-person learning? So we're capturing certain information based on where the kids are now, which is all, unless they're in the self-contained special ed classrooms or certain, you know, type target populations. Everyone's learning at home on the computer. Um, how are we going to um doc- document the transition to into in-person learning for these kids and follow individual kids? Is the data going to be able to be tracked that way so we know these are the kindergarten kids that came back into the classrooms? And this is how they're, they're learning uh increased or decreased versus the online. I mean, I just want to make sure we col- collect the data so that we can pick out and really know which kids actually do better. Um, in which format and and sort of um maybe design some, some work for them. Um, so I want to see if anyone has thoughts on that before I make my last point.
Yeah, we're able to track uh what's uh which classrooms uh students were in previously, which school programs. And so, for example, our T O L students, we'll be able to track and say, our uh track, identify uh where they are in the map in their road journey. All remind us all that, you know, learning's a progression, right? And so sometimes we see some of our students uh at an intervention stage at elementary schools that turn in and they go on and they. It, the, the light sparks, uh, the reading comprehension sparks and they're, you know, honor students at at uh different levels. And so we're able to see those pieces, uh, having a portfolio of options for schools, uh, especially at our secondary schools. We feel is a really critical step for families to say, not only uh is it an online option, but is there a different learning environment that you're accelerating or you have an interest in? And so we're able to track that. And so that's why, you know, we even talk about uh regions or in our our town, but our pathways are not um linear. Um, student journeys could go from a different choice schools, different choice programs, and so the data allows us to track that.
Well, that, that's great news and I, and I think from some of um, you know, thinking about Soda Sammy idea, some of these schools that are uh non-traditional types of schools, which work really super well for, for some students. Um, and I think maybe we'll find that to come online has been a venue that has, uh, is going to work for some students um over the in in classroom. Where they're one of many and and can't um can't, the noise process um is difficult for them or whatever. So good, I'm, I'm, I'm glad to hear that. And then the last one back to, um, and I'm not sure if it was Julie who mentioned that we'll be receiving these individual school reports. I'm wondering when will that be, because I know if it's a continuing process, at what point do you, do we, you know, share the actual? Portfolio for the schools, is it at the end of the year or are we seeing it as in some, in progress somewhere along the way?
Julie, do you want to?
Yeah, we can definitely share, so we have the first quarter that we could share and then in March we'll have another quarter that we can share.
Okay.
Director Bombay, so they, they're updating and we're in that place right now where they are, they're updating based upon what they've learned. So and and um, so our thinking right now is, and the board can tell us how you would like them. You know, we could, we could do the comprehensive and targeted, or if you just have interest in individual schools, we can do that too, but we house those in our office.
Well, I, I think for me, I, um, I think it makes sense to wait a bit till that we, you know, we get something where they've seen, they've, they've been assessed. They're, they've made those changes and they've revised their, their goals. And so we can actually see that and see how they're moving towards that revision, at least that would be better for me, but.
The progression.
Yeah, the progression and I'm, I'm open to um, you know, having access to um however many of them, we, I mean, all of them. And then just maybe we can pick some, you know, if you give them to us in in the, here's the targeted schools and here are the subject areas they're targeted in and here is the comprehensive and then here's all the others. Uh, and then I think we can look at whichever we're interested in.
Cool.
Thanks, everybody.
I have a couple of comments and then a couple of questions. Um, uh, just as, as a general statement, a lot of times we think, I think we should pause and be real explicit about some things for the benefit of the community and and. Uh, and we still have relatively newer board members, so sometimes I think this look back is good. Yeah, in one of your earlier slides, you referenced the WAC that requires all schools to have a school improvement plan. But I really think it's important to note that there isn't really a strong mechanism to make sure that those plans are actionable. Except for the smaller subset of comprehensive and targeted schools. That requirement is federal and is tied to like federal accountability for identifying comprehensive and targeted schools at the state level. But really, when it comes to that WAC of having a school improvement plan, there's no real strong accountability mechanism coming from the state to make sure that these plans are useful. So I just want to applaud the team again for building a process that really is about driving that continuous improvement at all of our schools. And not just about the schools where we have to do it for federal accountability purposes. I just want to call out that clearly and um acknowledge the team's work um for going beyond just the federally mandated requirements. Also, in past, um, um, it's been great to see this, the CAP process develop over the last couple of years and to hear how the process is continuing to mature. Um, so it was great to see the examples of the goals and the kinds of data that you're pointing to. Um, but one of the questions, uh, so just from a structural standpoint too, like, I feel like we're embedding lots of things in this process. So we're embedding our focus on continuous improvement, kind of that continuous improvement cycle of analyzing the data, developing plans, implementing them, monitoring them. But we're also really um operationalizing our MTSS, multi-tiered system of support. So you've talked about in one of those goals, um, students who are identified for tier two support. But then it made me think of how are you all um thinking about students who need tier three support in that area? And how does the CAP support connect to how we are implementing our learning assistance program and um supports through Title I? Can you, someone explain to me how all those pieces come together? Like, how does the extra support and the small group instruction link to how we're implementing the learning assistance program and supports through Title I? Because it's easy to see them on paper as discreet and separate programs, but you know, it's all one school, so how does this all come together?
Yeah, that's a great question. So since we shared that Larchmont example, I'll talk a little bit about that. And I had the opportunity to see their intervention program last year. So the interventionists work side by side with the classroom teacher and know the goal. So that students might be receiving, like Krista talked about, their core instruction, which is grade level priority standards. They're all getting that instruction. Then they may have that double dose with the classroom teacher on that specific skill. You know, a certain time, fifteen minutes, three times a week. But then there's that coordination and alignment with what they're getting in title or lap. So that we're making sure as well as our students in L R C. So there's that alignment across, you know, our systems and in our PLCs, our late starts. Teachers have the opportunity to collaborate, but they have action plans. So what you see with CAP is those are two action steps that, you know, it's over a six to eight week period. So they have action plans that detail the daily instruction, you know, the, what are the, the standards or the learning target? And and what's the, the task there? So there, there is that alignment, you know, we're continuing to work on that with schools. It's tighter in some places, but it's, it's definitely a piece that we talked about. And want to actually call that out in a more explicit way in our CAP.
I think that's also to add to the conversation is the directors work very closely with Dr. Rita and Taj Jensen and Christine Kelly. And so the, the Title One Lap Office has gone through some major revisions and working with classroom interventionists to say, so what is our evidence-based practices? How do we become um very precise, right? And so it's not a, uh, we're not working on math necessarily in intervention. We're working on very specific targeted skills that are appropriate to those power standards. And then we're grouping kids by the need for extra support in those. And so we didn't get into that very much of that, but these guys have regular meetings with them, they talk about what that looks like, even to the allocation of staff members. How do we provide their, our interventionists are just doing a a bang-up job with, they have plans, they're looking at their own data. They're building their own plans, but all in that, that cross between a small group and tier two, as well as one-to-one and sometimes very even small group tier three. And so it's not a, um, and for those that are at home, you think about it as this idea that um we all need uh good instruction and support. And then sometimes in a specific skill, it's not even a subject area, in a specific skill, I may need extra support. And then within that, there may be a sub-skill of that, that I need some extra support in there. And so that's what we think about is as a triangle. Um, and it doesn't mean that a kid is necessarily even behind necessarily, it, it means that it's about extra support. And so the CAP process is is also a collaborative effort with multiple departments. Teaching for learning plays a critical role. We talked about the Title Lap, but also the Student Support Services Equity and Achievement Office, and we can go on and on and there. So the DART team plays a really significant role in making sure that people are looking at the right data. Um, the IT team, it plays a role in trying to help uh develop platforms to look at this uh in more effective and efficient ways. And I would tell you that we have, um, we've come a long way and we have just dipped our toes in the water. Um, and we are getting clearer, we've always known we've had achievement gaps and there are gaps, there is not a gap, it's gaps. Um, and we're getting more precise about, Director Bombay, what's working. Um, but it doesn't mean it's going to work everywhere in the same situation. It is still very much relationship-based, there's a trust level between the classroom teacher and the interventionist and the child and working that. And parents played a critical role in reinforcing skills and supports. And so we'll get better at our parent uh opportunities to support kids at home with those targeted skills uh as well as we move forward.
I think what you're saying is so important because um I think historically we've had these mental models, like if students identified for Title One support, lap support. Or if a student is identified as even gifted, like it was this blanket determination that you're gifted in all cases. Or you are a student who needs support in math across the board. And so I really love that we're moving to talking about these things as more dynamic and needing to, us needing to be more specific and precise about what area of support. What area of math do you need additional support in or what area of academic or artistic talents are you really gifted in? And not really speaking in these blanket um terms. So I really appreciate the um, the move to just both a more dynamic process of continuous achievement and continuous improvement. And just a more dynamic way to identify and to provide the, those targeted supports to kids. Um, a couple, just the last couple of questions on just the process. Like, we've talked some now about additional supports for students at level tier two and tier three, and you talk some about core instruction. Has this process helped to identify those areas where it might be better to push like some additional focus on a content area into the core instruction? Because so many students in the class seem to be having trouble in that area. Or has this process helped on the flip side to identify some areas where our teachers might need some additional support because of what the data looks like? Or has it played out that way at all?
And I think you're hitting on, on all the things that happen, right? So I, I think, you know, the, as we're looking at the data, the data is guy, guiding us in those directions that you're talking about. And then every school also has a professional development plan that's informed by this work, right? And so the, so then principals are really deciding uh how they're, how they're going to be developing their staff and what supports they're going to be providing their staff uh ongoing.
Any school has a leadership plan that um identifies the work that the principal and the admin team and teacher leaders are going to work together on. To improve instruction, improve student achievement in their building. So they also talk to us about that as well and how that is working. And sometimes we have to make changes and alterations to their professional development plan. You know, it's all about looking at their data and what is their data reflecting uh about what's happening in the school?
You know, and I, I'd just like to add that, you know, teaching um is a really complex job. And, you know, I think that um even on our best days, you can, you can have a lesson that's taught and, you know, maybe seventy percent of your kids don't get it the first time. And, you know, there's almost like that's a, uh, there's this wall, something went wrong, you did something wrong. Um, it, it's, it's super complex, there's a lot of reasons that may be in there. And so, you know, we're, we're really trying to use data to say, pause, reflect. Those late start Wednesdays where we're looking at, we're asking folks to really dive deep into that and not to just move on. But to say, there was a lot of reasons for that, we're not judging, but you've got to work together as a learning community and reteach, refocus, re opportunities to that. Um, you know, it's, it's more rocket science, you know? If the wind's off, the rocket doesn't launch. Well, when little Johnny or Josh, he's having a bad day, the whole school doesn't get a shut, right? And so. right? And so there's, it's a really complex job and it takes a lot of skill set and our teachers are working really hard at it. We're very proud of them. They're looking at the data. We haven't arrived. We have not closed the gaps. We are not settling and we're going to keep working at it and.
Yeah. Again, I just love that. Just de-stigmatizing the need for additional support is the way to go. Like I could do algebra just fine, but I struggled my way through geometry. I just could not get it. And then after I got past geometry, back on track. So I just think that it's so important to normalize the fact that we all learn at different paces and we learn different things that look. So I just think that's great. Lastly, sorry, last comment. I know we're running and I'm running us in overtime. But in a follow-up report, can you share with us the different targeted subgroups that the schools that are identified as targeted three plus or identified four? Can you break that down for us just so we can see which groups were below that threshold at each of those schools? Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah. The, the Washington School Improvement Framework on the OSPI website clearly identifies those, so we can do that.
We'll get it in a Friday for you folks. The last group I'd like to give a quick shout out to is our instructional coaches. Right? Our teachers are learners as well. And so our instructional coaches are creating a culture that says, even a classroom teacher that says, hey, this may be a new concept for me. I'm struggling with this. They have place to go. It's non-evaluative and things. And so our instructional coaches play a really critical role in this process as well.
Thank you. Any other last comments from the board? Not one. Thank you again for your presentations and we'll move on to item two point two, the budget kickoff.
So Rosalind's here to kick it off. Thank you, Rosalind. I'll turn it over to you and Kristen.
Thank you. Yes, our budget director, Kristen Bella, has joined us as well. She's going to do moral support. We, we didn't stretch it out so that she had a part in this tonight, but it is shocking how quickly a year goes by because we were just doing this a year ago and it seems like it was yesterday. If Tom is working to pull up the presentation for us, the first thing I would like to do is just start out with a, a quick snapshot of where we're at right now. I think it always helps to build context as to where we're going to be going when we have a clear understanding of where we're starting. If you'll go two slides ahead for me, Tom. Thanks so much. And I'll start off with, you know, this is the, this is a list of the things that we're watching for the 2021 year that we're in currently. Our year-end close for nineteen twenty ended better than we thought it would. Almost thirty seven million dollars in our fund balance, which sounds like a lot of money. However, it's still only about thirty four days of operating expenditures. So if we were to have a major emergency that prevented us from receiving any additional resources, we would only be able to make probably two, maybe three payrolls before we would have to start borrowing resources in order to, to fund our activities. So that puts us at about seven and a half percent. And our board policy is of course five percent. That's a little bit better off to start the year. That happened primarily because of where we ended with COVID. We got a little bit of extra resources in. We still were able to keep the majority of our apportionment revenues last year, but we were able to contain our expenditures a little better than we had necessarily, we hadn't necessarily anticipated as we were going through the year. So that was helpful. And I think that that really does help to draw on, you know, fund balance is really meant as an emergency fund. It's our pot of resources for the rainy day. Clearly this is a rainy day. And so it's not that we're trying to gain a lot of resources here, but I think that we may end up having to utilize those, which I will show you on our next slide. But I'm going to move on to, we, we've also been tracking and monitoring all of our COVID reimbursements. And as you know, we have additional expenses that have come with COVID in the form of PPE, additional staff resources, additional cleaning requirements. And, and, you know, many multitude of things. We were fortunate enough to receive some Esser dollars. And around one Esser, we got about eight point three million dollars. We have now claimed just under five million of that, that eight point three million. So we've made a pretty good dent in claiming those Esser dollars. And we do have another Esser reimbursement. What the president signed into play in the end of December of last year is now going to be allocated out to school districts. However, it's coming through us via the legislature and there's some conversation about how those resources will be allocated to us. So I think it's a little too early to tell you what the Esser two money looks like for us and have it be anything meaningful. But it is something that we're tracking and monitoring because it could potentially help out in twenty twenty one, definitely would help out in twenty twenty one, twenty two. CARES dollars were the, the million and a half dollars that we received through Pierce County so generously. We've already expended all of those resources. That has been spent and we're moving on from that. FEMA, we were only eligible for the one reimbursement. We're not finding any other reimbursements that FEMA is willing to participate with us on. So we, we won't really have any additional FEMA dollars. Our enrollment is down around eleven hundred students from what we budgeted. And that's a pretty significant number. It's close to ten million dollars of basic education revenue. That also has implications in other revenue sources like CTE or special education. As we have found that students have either disenrolled or, or chosen a different option, environment, what have you. We do expect that we will recover some of those students for the twenty one, twenty two school year. I think that we're going to have to be really cognizant of how much risk we're willing to take and and what we add back and what that's going to look like for our budget. So that's something that we'll watch as we continue on. And then we're watching certain budget areas where we know that there's a, a level of disruption this year. Nutrition services is one of those. We've lost our ability to claim. Let me rephrase that. We've lost our ability to, to pay for, have students pay for lunches that are paid students, but we've gained the ability to claim every student's lunch for federal dollars. However, the federal dollars aren't really keeping up with our internal expenses. So we know we're going to have a deficit in our nutrition services program this year. And that's something that we're tracking on. Transportation, we're losing revenue. And we have some expenses. We're not sure our expenses will be covered. There's currently a bill in the legislature that they're trying to fast track that may gain enough traction to get, to get us seventy percent of our transportation funding, which should cover our impacts for this year. However, we do still have our first student vendor who's struggling with the loss of our entire contract. We, we've paid our first student vendor roughly eight and a half million dollars over the last several years. And they still have fixed costs and expenses that they're experiencing. So we need to continue to work with them on, you know, what we'll be able to provide if anything. And of course, for the services that they are providing, we're paying them for those services. Because we'll be reimbursed from the state for those services. CTE is seeing some enrollment impacts. Special education, we've added a number of staffs in support of IEP needs, the Individualized Education Plans that, to support students. And so we know that there are costs associated with sped that weren't part of our initial plan. And then we're just tracking and making sure that we don't experience any other emergencies. You know, heaven forbid, knock on wood. I don't expect that we'll see anything, but we just need to be critically aware that that's still a possibility. If you'll move us on to that next slide, Tom. So when I said we'd talk about in the next slide, this is our projected year end. So that means what we think our year end would look like if everything in November were to continue on based on historical trends with some modifications based on current scenario. So this is where we're seeing the picture of year end. I'm going to draw your attention over to the variance column on the right-hand side. And you'll see that beginning fund balance was almost five point seven million dollars better than what we had planned in our budget. So that's good news that we have a higher starting point than we thought. But you'll see in the next line down that our revenues are pretty significantly down. It's, it's almost five percent of a loss of revenues. That's outside of where we would want to be trending. We'd like to keep our revenues right around ninety nine percent. And historically, we've been at ninety nine percent of budgeted revenues. So that is a concern and that's directly related back to the transportation loss of revenue as well as the loss of enrollment revenue and CTE, special education, because that's all of our funding sources. Not just, you know, enrollment. But what, the good news is if you go to the next line down, our expenditures are also down. We're seeing a decline in our expenditures. So we're saving in what we would normally have as costs. That's coming through in a number of salary components as well as contracts that we're not utilizing and so forth. So as we start ramping back up and seeing that we're providing additional schooling for students and bringing students back, we'll continue to see our expenditures grow and we may see our revenues grow as well. So that's where, when we get down to the ending fund balance on that last line, our budget is tracking right in line with where we're projecting year end. And that means that we will use a good portion of our fund balance in order to manage just where we're at this year. We'd still be within budget. We'd still be in an acceptable range, but it does deplete that bank up to the point where we now only have the five percent reserves. So we want to be cautious and careful. I, I also want to say too, you know, there's a couple of things that aren't incorporated here. All of the CARES money or all of the Esser money isn't necessarily claimed yet. So we still have some of those resources that have to play into this. As well as, you know, November is our, our most challenging month financially. So when we look at November, we do know that this is probably our low mark for the year. This month and, and March are usually our two worst months because we get our, our revenues come in a little differently. And when we're looking at trending, it always looks a little wonky. So I, I would say that I feel confident that we're going to do better than this and that we'll continue tracking it. However, if we do start to see that the trend is, is going the wrong direction from where we're at now, then we'll probably need to take some fast action and have some conversations internally about where our risk level is and, and what we're willing to accept as a, as a, as an organization. So if you'll move on for me, Tom. I, I, I mean, really, I really just wanted to set a tone there. Now I'm going to kick off really everything there is to know about the budgeting process. We have a number of new members that haven't been through a full budget cycle with us before. So I'll, I'll probably spend a little more time getting into this deeper than I would normally. And I think it's always great for the public to hear that. We operate under a two-year budget cycle. We've aligned ourselves to the state legislature. They do a full year massive budget and then they do an off-year the next year supplemental budget, which is, is a smaller budget where they're just kind of reworking. We follow that trend primarily because a good portion of our revenues come from the legislature. And it's important for us to be able to identify what the legislature is doing and to try and monitor and track our expenses in relationship to some of the decisions that they've made. In light of the two-year budget cycle, we have developed a budgeting by priorities annual process. So we have this process on the right-hand side, this circle of, the circle of life, I would call it, because I live and breathe budget. So it's the circle of my life at least. And what you'll find there is a series of activities that we engage in. And we don't engage in all of these in both budget year, both budget years for the cycle, but this year we're going to be engaging in all of them because it is the full cycle. So I'll start you at the top and I'll walk you through what these activities are. Identifying funding is the first activity. So clearly you can't really build a budget unless you know what you're, you're trying to budget against. The revenue piece is very important to us. There's two real components to that, the legislative action as well as our internal impacts. So internal impacts could be collective bargaining impacts. They could be staffing changes. They could be new program. New programs that we're opening or operating that we need to incorporate, or, or they could be philosophical changes that we need to address. And then of course, the legislature is dependent upon what happens with the state legislative budget cycle. When we determine our priorities, that's what's done through our strategic plan. So lucky for us, those are already determined by you and the hard work that you've just done in re-implementing our strategic plan. We know what they are. We know what we're trying to, to benchmark against. That also goes into identifying the results. The identifying of results would be the benchmarks that you as a board have set for the district. And then where we don't have a benchmark that's relevant to that work, it would be a key performance indicator that either a department might develop, I think specifically in the operations world where we have, you know, transportation or, you know, custodial work. We would want to have key performance indicators that are working to address best practice and, and that they're setting goals that would identify how they're going to be working to improve the work of the organization. Then what will happen is we'll develop proposals. So we work with, we work with every dollar in the budget and proposals are, are fashioned based on several different components. You know, they could be based on a department. They could be based off of a funding source. They could be based off of an activity. And they can cross departments. We, we have many different proposals where we have three or four or five different departments that work within that one proposal. Preschool is a great example. We've got a Title One component. We've got a special education component. We've got a basic component. And so the, what will happen is that preschool team will get together and they will work to build a budgeting by priorities proposal. And that proposal is not that dissimilar than what the CAP provides. It's, it's a series of activities and questions that the proposal writer puts together that identifies, you know, what they're doing, why they're doing it, who their stakeholders are, who it's going to support, how it's going to move our benchmarks or key performance indicators for the district, for the benefit of, of the good. And then what resources are needed in order to make that, that function happen. And so with every dollar in the, and I, when I say every dollar in the budget, we're really talking about the general fund. We do have the other funds. But many of those are, are functioning in a different mechanism. They don't have the same requirements that the general fund does. So we'll take all those dollars in the general fund, we'll put them into budgeting by priorities proposals. And then we will work as a cabinet team to review and I, I call it rank. We don't do a formal ranking process, so to speak, but we do go through and review and analyze, you know, what we, what we are willing to support, what we think doesn't need to be supported. And then, you know, what changes need to be made based on, you know, a multitude of factors. And then from there, we've made decisions and we will do approvals and denials and start working through, you know, any of the implementation requirements, any staffing impacts, notification of staff, if we're eliminating a program or something along those lines. And in the middle of all that is our communication aspect. You know, it's important for us to communicate the various components and it's important for us to communicate back and forth. We want to make sure that we're looping the board into this practice. I think that's something that we missed in our prior full cycle. So we'll make sure that we're finding natural point and where we can loop you into that. And I'll talk about that in a, a slide or two. So that's our overarching budget process. I'll move us on to the next slide, Tom. What we'll look at for our first steps will be first, just tracking and monitoring what's happening at the legislature. I would expect that it'll be a good month before we see a legislative budget come out. Could be sooner. Sometimes they're really efficient. Could be later. Sometimes they're really inefficient. So we can see what happens. But, you know, in our, in our mind, I'll just say in my mind, I'll speak from a personal opinion, which I don't normally do, but I'll do that today. In my mind, it would be great from a, from a finance perspective, in this circumstance, in this year, if we could just maintain our funding where it's at and not move backwards, like that would be a huge celebration in my mind. So we, we'll continue to track and monitor. Of course, we work with our legislative advocate and he does an amazing job of representing us. And I know Director Keating is also a great advocate for us. And so that's, that's going to be a critical role for us this year because that funding will be very impactful for how we operate moving forward. And then internally, we'll have a number of tasks that will, will have to be done. We do a five-year, multi-year plan that identifies, you know, where, where we see things over the next five years so that we can try and be proactive around any kind of resource issues that we may experience. Of course, who can plan for COVID? But that's something that we'll look at is, are we going to be finding any increases in revenues or grants? Where is it that we can utilize savings or find efficiencies? Can we be more lean or efficient in our practices? And then, you know, are there any circumstances where we need to reduce or eliminate or avoid costs? Right now, costs for staffing are around eighty six percent of our budget. And that's a little skewed because of COVID. We've cut out a number of contracts and materials that we might normally see. So that number is a little bit higher, but typically eighty five percent of our budget is, is dedicated to our staff. If you'll move on for me, Tom. Some key areas that we already know that we need to focus on for growth or strategic plan needs would include, you know, we know that there are some, some new board goals that are set this year. So how are we going to work to incorporate those into our practice? Educational justice is another focus. And it's not to say that we need to revise everything that we do, but I think that we need to have evidence of intentionality in that focus as we move forward. One way that we know that we're going to work to do that is we have an equity lens that, that we utilize in the district somewhat frequently. And we're going to be working to, to build the equity lens as part of the, the budgeting by priorities proposal and embed that within. So that as we're talking about the things that we're going to be doing and how we're going to be doing it and what we're going to be doing, that we can bring that equity focus to that of, you know, and how does this impact, you know, this population or that population or who is impacted or, you know, what happens if we don't do this? So some of that is So some of that is certainly needed and necessary in a focus that we're moving towards this year. We have to build in a plan for hunt, so there's costs associated with the startup of a school. We haven't opened a new school from scratch in quite a while. So um, this is something that is going to be cost um, uh, uh, a cost that's going to drive additional resources that uh potentially away from something else if we're not getting new resources in. Potentially bargaining impacts because that's just how uh every year works. Uh, we bar- we bargain eleven, I don't know, we have eleven different groups. And, and I think we have nine different contracts that we have to build in potential bargaining impacts for. Uh, the Tacoma Online Program is something that we want to continue uh moving forward. And so uh, we'll, we'll need to work on what the cost impacts look like for that program. And then of course, we talked about enrollment impacts already and what that could look like. So those are just a few of the, the concerns that we're tracking and considerations that we're trying to monitor for the upcoming cycle. And Tom, if you'll move on to timelines for me. This is a slide of just some high-level touchpoints on the budget. We've got our governor's budget, which is more of a philosophical document than anything else at this point. Uh, that was released in December and um, you know, it's, it's got some interesting points to it. Um, but we not, we're not spending a lot of time focusing on that as far as it relates to our finances at this point. The legislative session kicked off in January last week. And so we're well on our way through the legislative process. Uh, hopefully that will end in April, but sometimes it extends out to July. So that, that has a big impact on when we can finish our budget. The spring staffing process uh typically takes place February through April. And the reason that we do our spring staffing process in that timeframe is because our reduction in force determination needs to happen in advance of our May fifteen deadline. And then there's all the notifications and the communications that need to happen in advance of that. And so uh, those are all uh intertwined activities that need to be addressed and, and tackled upfront. I, I don't, you know, I, I, there, the determination of a reduction in force hasn't been made at this point. Um, I, I don't know that I have any expectations around it, but you know, that's just a, a timeline activity that we have to monitor and track. Uh, we do have to release a budget of some kind to the E S D on July tenth. It's a legal requirement, uh, but it doesn't have to be the complete final budget. Our cabinet will be working all the way through the process. We'll be working on several different community activities that I talk about in another slide, all the way through the process. And adoption is required by August thirty-first. That's the, the only deadline that we actually have beyond the July tenth date of releasing something. And then right away, we kick off into fall staffing as school starts. So um, it's a pretty tight timeline when you think about the amount of work that has to go in to developing this entire process and getting it through and um, uh, but we've, we've oiled this machine a number of times. This is our seventh time through the budgeting by priority cycle. So I'm feeling pretty confident that we'll be able to get there, provided that the legislature doesn't extend into July. That's where we get into some real problems. If you'll hit that next slide for me, Tom. Um, what we see here is, is a more detailed timeline. And this is really getting at um by activity, what kinds of things are we going to be looking at? Uh, and I really just want to focus you on that left-hand column where we talk about what, where the board interactions are. And, you know, in, in January, we'll be working on our guiding principles. So the guiding principles, which are attached to tonight's agenda, they've been provided to the board previously for any commentary and any comments were incorporated into that document. We also released that document to a couple of our bargaining units for some feedback in advance uh, and have incorporated any feedback we got from that. And so what we see here in our agenda, which I don't have pulled up and I don't think we need to pull it up at this point, um, is a document that helps to define a framework and gives cabinet instructions on what we believe is important as an organization and where we should focus our efforts and concentrate our, our decision points. Um, and that's what the guiding principles does. And when you define those things for us, it's also a best practice according to School District Budgeting Best Practices by the Government Finance Officers Association. Uh, that helps us determine as a cabinet team where we need to head and, and uh, I think is a valuable exercise for us. Uh, we will be bringing that document back for uh, final approval from you on the twenty-eighth, uh, which is next meeting. So if you do still have comments or questions about the guiding principles that are attached to the agenda or the public has comments or questions, uh, they can provide those to us in advance of, of the adoption of that. Uh, in February, we'll come back with a legislative agen- uh, update. I also have a financial update that will be due in February. Uh, we'll work probably in March to give a staffing update. I think that that might depend on some of the legislative activity. Um, but we will give regular updates on the budget and, and, and all of these components. We'll work probably around April and June to give you some kind of individualized updates or whether that's, you know, meetings with several of you so that we can help you understand where we're at in the process. And if there are decisions to be made, that you can understand what those decisions look like uh, as, as we're making them. Uh, in May, we would bring back more legislative information. We should hopefully have a finalized uh, budget by April, at the end of April. And then we would be able to come to you in May with what those final impacts are and where we see the changes and adjustments. And then in June, we would hope to start our webinar hearings, uh, webinars and hearings, excuse me, with an anticipated adoption in July, dependent upon what happens, you know, as we process through the cycle. But August would be our last chance for an adoption. And then uh, my final group of slides is really around the communication that we can expect or, or how we are interacting with the budget. What you'll find here with the cabinet roles and activities, uh, these are some high-level um points so that you understand what the cabinet is doing in their role in the budget. We're working on understanding the shortfall and looking at the details of it. We're watching the legislative action and, and getting in and trying to testify where we can uh, or where we have worries or concerns. Um, we're looking at the reduction, you're on the right slide, Tom. Uh, we're looking at the reductions and ideas for the savings. If there are needs for savings or I'm not sure if we'll have a deficit or a shortfall at this point, but assuming we have a deficit, we would look at reductions and saving options. Uh, and of course, any efficiencies that need to be made. We'll be having regular um meetings. So I've already scheduled meetings for uh, you know, cabinet budget retreats so that we can start working through the budget proposals and doing our reviews. And then um, you know, we'll participate as a collective in our public meetings so that we can ensure that we have representation and, and um, and information to make those decisions. And then if you'll go to that next slide, Tom. When I look at the board's role in our budgeting process, uh, there are four main pieces that I think are representative, you know, they're thirty thousand foot level pieces. We want you to define our framework, which would be the guiding principles. It'll be important for you to monitor through a number of feedback loops of what's happening and where we're at. Um, whether that be, you know, the legislation or the internal impacts or the decisions that are being made around proposals. Uh, and then we'll want you to engage with the public. That'll be an important aspect, whether that be through our budget webinars or um hearings or, or whichever formats we come forward with. And then finally, of course, you would approve the, the budget, that's part of uh, your role. From a community perspective, if you'll go to the next slide, Tom. Um, we'll have several chances or opportunities for engagement with our community members. Uh, this is a critical aspect, sorry, we're one slide behind, Tom. A critical aspect of what we're trying to accomplish. And we do um, still out there, am I frozen? I hope not. There we go. Okay. So we'll have four, four main points that I want to bring to you on the community aspect is the budget calculator. Um, this is something that we have talked about, we did this a decade ago. It's hard to believe, but we did it a decade ago roughly. And um, it's a, a, an electronic computer function where you go in and you tell us, you can see all kinds of different aspects of the budget and slices and dices of the budget and provide some feedback or, or um, share with us how you might change the budget based on what you think is something um, that, that you think is important by you, by, based on your priorities. So it does help us gauge some priorities from our community groups. And that is something that we're planning to roll out, hopefully in February. It's, it's relatively developed, we just need to bring it back to cabinet and, and kind of dig in a little. And then we'll, we'll have an opportunity for the board to preview it as well. Uh, the budget webinars we did last year, I think that they were a success. Uh, I think that it, one benefit that I found of the budget webinars, while they didn't necessarily reach a lot of people live, we were able to record them and post them on the website. And so we could see that there were a number of people who came back in after the fact and watched those videos. And so I, I, we, we definitely believe that we reached more people through the budget webinars even live than we would have in person. So we had a higher participation rate from that perspective. But then with the added bonus of being able to go back and watch those, we were, we were sure that we've reached more people than we have in the past. Uh, and then we'll also have a budget advisory committee this year. And that looks like a group of community members that are selected to participate in a series of educational and um, activity-based exercises. So uh, that process will be kicking off in February as well, where we're going to start seeking um participants. We have some participants that we would invite back, uh, and then ensuring that we would have some more people that could participate. And then finally, we have a requirement to hold a formal public hearing. And so we would definitely want to do that. I have two slides left and I'm, I'm trying to rush through, so you'll have to ask me questions after. But other communication strategies, we want to make sure that we're keeping our labor unions up to speed, our community partners up to speed, making sure that the departments are informed as we process along through the budget. Uh, and then of course, our principal group is such a critical piece in, in providing us information and feedback about whether certain things will work or not. And so we want to ensure that they're participating. And then my last slide on our next steps. You know, we're, we're working now to continue monitoring our current financials. We'll bring you a legislative and budget update shortly. And hopefully in February, we'll get that budget calculator released and out to the, to the masses. I thank you for your time. I think I went a little over my time, but thank you so much.
Thank you, Rosalyn. Um, it's always good to get a comprehensive view of the budget process, especially given what you said in the beginning, we have folks who haven't gone through this full process before. So I'll just open it up for questions or comments, starting with Director Bond Bright or Vice President Bond Bright. Do you have any comments or questions?
No, I just want to um, thank you, Rosalyn and, and the whole team for your hard work on this. I, uh, again, this was the second time I've seen this, but last year it was, uh, it was the, you know, just a tweaking session, the uh supplemental. And this time, it all is falling into place for me, so um, thank you so much. I think I totally understand where we're going and um, and where we, where we need to pay most attention. I know COVID was a, was, was a difficult year and um, through a lot of things, you know, out of, out of whack. But um, hopefully I know a lot of what uh, what our budget's going to look like is really going to depend on what the feds do and what the state does with um, either COVID response and/or the uh, you know, portionments. So um, looking forward to you keeping me posted and I don't have any questions other than that.
Thank you.
You, Director Keating, any comments or questions?
Um, yes. So earlier today on the WASD call, ESAR was talked about. And I thought I had somewhat of a grip on it. And then throughout that call I got done and I was like, wait a minute, maybe I don't know, maybe I don't actually understand any of this. So could you, and I think it might be helpful for the public too, could you, Rosalyn, just talk about like what their ESAR one, ESAR two? And could you just clarify what they are? And then I have one other question.
So I, I, that's a, it's a broad question. Um, I guess I would categorize ESAR one and ESAR two, the, you know, when, when the federal government approved CARES money as a uh stabilization fund or as a, you know, a recovery fund, the expectation was that resources would be allocated out to school districts and that um, because they knew that there were additional costs that school districts were experiencing for this new learning environment that we were all experiencing, right? Uh, for ESAR one, we were allocated eight point three million dollars. And those resources were meant to provide us with new COVID-related expenditures. So if we had computers, um, PPE, additional staff to do um, monitoring of, of temperatures uh, as examples, nursing services, what have you. Uh, those are all things that we can apply for reimbursement funding for. And so we have to actually apply to OSPI and say, hey, this is what we spent, show them our receipts. And they say, okay, great, here's your, your reimbursement. Uh, ESAR two, which was just approved, has a little bit of a different flavor. And uh, what, while it's still a, an expectation of recovery, it may not be allocated to us for a reimbursement expectation. What the state is looking at right now is how they can use that to balance out their own shortfalls and their own um, resources. And we're slated to get thirty-one million dollars of this ESAR two resources. However, the state is saying, well, we also anticipated giving you some money for enrollment losses and some money for transportation losses. And so we're going to be offsetting that from your ESAR two dollars. Um, but that's all sort of in flux right now because the legislature has to make those final prioritizations and determinations. What we'll be able to spend the resources on could be just a, an everyday use of our enrollment resources, our everyday use of transportation resources. And then we may have a reimbursement component where we have to say, okay, and here were our ESAR costs that we have to turn in and say, okay, now you can get receipts for these. So it is a little bit of a different flavor in that respect. Um, and, and I don't know how it will all end because it's really uh, uh, only about three weeks old that we've been addressing it. So I, did that answer your question or?
Yeah, that actually was really helpful. Thank you. Because I know we've talked about ESAR, we talk about CARES funding, we like, and it's all new in the conversation of our budgeting and, and, and um, funding sources, so I really do appreciate that. And then the other question um, around and, around the um, the hope that the legislature will um, hold um, hold this, uh, how does, I think I'm saying this wrong, but the hold harmless to around transportation. And I, I'm, what I'm wondering about when you were on one of the earlier slides around, I think it was the revenue source, the um, funding, the ninety-five points, some odd percent. So if we are, if the legislature does uh, hold us harmless, I think, is that how that is said? I'm not sure. Okay, thank you. Would that then help, um, would that increase the revenue um, uh, streams along with the refunds of ESAR and CARES?
Yeah, it, I think it still depends. We don't, we don't know yet. So there's a bill fifty-one twenty-eight that's out there, uh, Senate Bill fifty-one twenty-eight that addresses how we would, how they wanted to, to handle the, the transportation issue. And the transportation issue addresses two years, right? So we've got an issue in the twenty-twenty-one year where we've lost revenue because we have no ridership. And then also the formula takes into account past ridership components. And so we would also be impacted in twenty-one twenty-two, even if we had full ridership starting September one, which I don't know what September one's going to look like. Um, and, and so, because it hasn't been defined by anyone yet. Uh, so that bill is meant, when we talk about hold harmless, uh, they're, they're more likely saying for twenty-one twenty-two, you'd be held hold harmless because you really can't control what happened in twenty-twenty-one and that they would try to focus on how they're going to impact us less in twenty-one, you know, twenty-one, in twenty-one twenty-two. Uh, however, I want to say two, um, two things. One, just to go back to the ESAR conversation, it's really important to note that all of our ESAR dollars are one-time dollars. It's use it one time and they're gone forever. It's not an ongoing source. We're not using it to hire a bunch of new staff that we can't maintain for a long period of time. And, and so it's really important for us to understand that. Uh, secondly then, as they work through this bill on stabilization versus ESAR, right now, Senate Bill fifty-one twenty-eight provides us with seventy percent of our transportation revenue for the, for the current year. Uh, in light of this new ESAR money, they may not do that at all. So that might get stricken from the bill. And that next year then, we might have some benefits based on that bill, but not in this year. We would use our ESAR dollars or the state would direct those ESAR dollars to us.
Correct. Thank you. I know it's clear as mud, but that was really helpful.
Is that your last question, Director Keating? That was, okay. Um, Director Leon, any questions or comments?
Thank you for that uh, presentation and your hard work from your staff, obviously, on this, on this important part of, of how schools run, right? Um, we need to obviously have a um, a, a budget that uh, is always balanced and, and moves around and um, for reasons that are within control and out of our controls we've talked about. So I think part of the pieces, I think I want to um, reemphasize for the community a little bit is this piece of you had in your circle of life, communication right in the middle. Uh, and so communication is just key for all we do. So um, continuing this, uh, and how you outlined with the webinars and the, including the, the, the um, the community in this, I think it's really uh, advanced thinking and really inter- inter- to integrate the, the community and doing the budget calculators you talked about. Um, and then also having them being part of this advisory committee for the budget advisory committee are really important things for our community to get to keep uh, keep us uh, uh, let us know about their, their uh, the interests and the, what they, what they think is important. So as we make our decisions. And then you um, alluded to the, the, the budget. And then you um, alluded to the, the budget guiding principles. Um, we, we didn't go review them for the public today. I think it's, it's available on the agenda, of course. But just a few of the things that are important there, and before getting to that is, you talked about equity lens being used throughout budgeting, so it's important that the whole public understands we're really thinking about equity. So la equidad, uh, para todo estos presupuestos, para toda la comunidad es muy importante. Uh, so limiting disparities are part of this, enhancing social emotional well-being, relying on data for our decision-making, uh, and then keeping one of the key things is safety of students, staff and community. So la clave es seguridad de los estudiantes y los trabajadores. And so those are a few of the, not all of them, but a few of the points that are important for the public. When they review that document, they can focus in on that. Thank you. That's what I have.
Thanks. Thank you. Director Stroja? Any comments?
We, we talked about this uh, in, in our meeting together, Rosalyn, how, how numbers uh, make my head want to explode. But so I wanted to thank you and your staff for the work on this. And Lisa asked my question about um, ESER. I was thinking about the same thing. Wonder if you could break that down, and I appreciate it. Um, there was one final thing that just slipped my mind, and I was gonna say about this, probably because we just got done talking about numbers. So if it comes to me, I will, I'll send you an email, but right now, just thank you for, for the breakdown.
Uh, thank you. Director Stroja, was it in any way about communication? I saw you nod your head when we were talking about the advisory group.
That was it. So my, my question was gonna be, um, have there been any uh, specific conversations on how we can go above and beyond and getting our community involved in this, in this process? Like, like some straight-out ways that, you know, yeah.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, and, and Carl and I had this great conversation about how do we have more inclusive outreach? And so, you know, we recognize that some of the ways, the, most of the ways that we do outreach uh, uh, aren't necessarily um, the easiest ways for our community to engage. And so you, we want to be able to provide opportunity for that level of engagement. And so uh, Carl and I discussed some opportunities and ways that we could maybe do things a little differently to reach some of those broader community groups and, and do some new things and, and try some different um, outreach. So yes, thank you.
Yeah, um, my comments will just build off of that, um, a couple of comments. Like, I think the advisory group was a pretty successful structure the last time that we did the full budget cycle. I heard, I remember hearing from some of the members who commented on feeling like it was a good process, so I appreciate that. Um, uh, just as a note of, of group to, you don't have to take my recongrations, not at all, not a directive, not meant to sound directive, but in sitting in some of the Head Start Policy Council meetings, we've talked about ways of engaging some of those parents who are transitioning out of having Head Start aged kids into K-12 and ways for them to continue to be engaged. So that might, as you think about um, um, advisory council members to pl, plug in, um, that might be a group to reach to, just to see if any of those people are interested and get, continue to be engaged in this way. Um, I also uh, just wanted to ask a clarifying question. Um, you mentioned a few budget things to look for, like things that you know could be issues, transportation was on there. I, um, I just want to acknowledge and appreciate you for including the strategic goals and priorities piece, and then the focus on educational justice that the board has been talking about, and board goals too. It feels like you're, you were right there with us in hearing where we were going, so it's nice to see those potential priorities that we've expressed reflected on that slide. And then lastly, just a clarifying question, and I see your hand, Superintendent Santornal. Just on the clarifying point though, um, on that slide too, you mentioned um, Tacoma Online. On the technology side, as the maintenance of all the machines that we buy, is that something that we are likely going to tackle through the technology levy and through capital, the capital budget, and not a issue for the operating budget as much? Or how are we starting to think about that?
Yeah, I talked to our CIO, Ed Gracia, about this, uh, and I think that he might have brought this forward in a previous conversation with the board. But uh, we do have our um, capital technology levy. It's twenty-four million dollars a year. It's good for another four years. And so those resources include already an allocation for technology refreshes. And so what would naturally happen is, as we work through, we would cycle this through the refreshing. So you may have some machines that are a little bit older by the time you get to the end of the refresh cycle, um, but that we would have a, an incoming stream, at least for the next four years, that could help us address any of those um, issues. I don't expect that we would see a large operational budget impact, maybe except for um, maybe software uh, costs or something like that could potentially, but be an impact.
Different in it, Santornal? I'm sorry, I saw your hand up.
Um, I just wanted to say, I just wanted to reemphasize, I thought it was so, uh, that Rosalyn did such a good job in talking about, you know, how we were gonna really refocus and look at those things. But I didn't want, I want to make sure we're clear with the public, that these are priorities that this board and our staff has been working on all along. And that, you know, we're just, uh, you know, based on what we've learned through our COVID experience and based on what's shown up as we look at, you know, um, some of the needs across the district, that we want to deepen and increase those, uh, you know, those um, those places where we know we need to help students. So I just, I went, nice job, Rosalyn. I just wanted to make sure that was clear for our public.
Director Bond Bright?
Yeah, I just had a quick question because I know we've talked, this is pretty much just the operational general fund budget that we've talked about. And I, I, I had sort of two related questions. One is kind of during this process, when do we wrap in, you know, the other budgets that are part of the whole? And um, and then the other one was, this just comes out of the Friday report this last week. Um, we, we talked about the, the um, district trust funds. And I was unclear after looking at that if there was any action we, the board needed to be taking or if it was information only and, you know, and how, I just wanted at some point just to make sure that that didn't slip by and without attention. So I guess the bigger question then is, I see you nodding, you know, saying we don't need to have, be involved, which is great. But the second piece is, when do we wrap all the smaller budgets together into the whole? Just for the, for.
Right, right. Thank you. So um, you know, we, we do have a number of other funds. We have our general fund, which is our main operating fund, and then we also have a, a trust fund account, which is funds we hold in, in perpetuity for others. They're not really our dollars. So we don't set any budgets or guidelines for those. We just roll those dollars over. Uh, we have the associated student body funds, which are defined by what monies are collected from students and for specific activities, and those are also defined by the students. So they're essentially a trust of their own. We don't build any budgets for those. We just ask for what are the resources and how are you going to spend them? Uh, so uh, that's that set of budgets. Uh, the transportation vehicle fund is very simplistic in that it's only used to purchase uh, new buses. And so we define how many buses we're gonna buy based on what our needs are on the depreciation schedule and, and how the maintenance of those buses is working out, and identify what buses we're going to disposition and what buses we're gonna need to purchase, and build the budget based off of that. And then lastly would be capital, which is based off of our um, capital plan. And so we wouldn't want to build a budget that's based off of our priorities or our desires because our expectation is to, to live up to the standards of what we built into the capital um, initiative that the public approved. So those, those budgets all happen towards July and June, July. And they don't really require a lot of impact or effort from either the community or from a, a board perspective. And so uh, they're more perfunctory than anything else. Um, but yeah, I think that that pretty much addresses all of them.
Thanks. That really, that really clarified it. Thank you.
Yep.
Any last comments? I know we've got one more agenda item. Thank you, Rosalyn. We appreciate it and look forward to your updates too.
Let's go budget.
Thanks, Rosalyn. Okay, moving on to item number, now you don't have an agenda for me, but two point three, I think, or three, um, the COVID update.
So we just wanted to give you um, and come back and give a COVID update. We've got some things that are um, a little bit different this time. We're really gonna do three things. Uh, number one, just talk briefly about um, the new state guidance. I want to make sure that uh, our public has some opportunity to hear, you know, what changes have been made. And then secondly, we've had um, a group of our, our high school and middle school administrators that have are really taking a look at the middle school, high school schedules and have made some changes that we think that will really um, enhance the uh, one of the instruction opportunities for our students. And then lastly, just give you some Pierce County updates and talk to you a little bit about, um, you know, some of the things that are going on. So those three things, I'm gonna start and just talk about the state guidance. Uh, I think our public is probably totally sick of us saying state guidance, but it's just important. And we think it's important that you uh, get to see that along the way and know what's happened. So this first slide, thanks, uh, Tom. The next one is a slide that really talks about what the new state guidance is, and that's really dense. And so I'm just gonna focus and highlight um, part, part of, part of each paragraph. Um, the first paragraph is that uh, the Department of Health has revised the metrics that inform local decisions. So that means some of the things that we were doing before, uh, and that uh, we were staying within those guides, the guidelines, they've changed. And so we're looking, the two things that they've changed around are in-person learning because the risk of transmission, uh, data gathered has changed, and so we're paying attention to that. Number two, uh, the second bullet is, these changes really include revisions to the COVID-nineteen incidence rates. And we talked, Josh talked a little bit about that last time, about how those, it goes back to that first paragraph about the metrics. And that now we're making uh, some decisions based on um, the incidence rates, rates, and the decisions about those have changed. And so what the changes are about is, number one, who to prioritize in, in person learning. And we've talked about how it has been our um, our younger learners. And then also how we look at uh, trends like the positivity, uh, test positivity, how many people are testing positive, um, the trends in cases and the trends in hospitalization. So those things inform this decision-making. So the um, the next bullet, DOH, has defined um, the maximum for small group size. That's our guidance now, is a size of fifteen. And that's for learning when the disease activity is high and it's defined as our youngest learners. So translation, we can bring our youngest learners in in a group size of fifteen or less uh, while activity is high and it's defined as just for our youngest learners. So you remember, we talked always before, we talked about a decision tree. And so the decision tree is uh, not, is, we're not gonna be referring to a decision tree anymore. We're gonna be talking about a toolkit. And the toolkit has two checklists um, that we use to really talk about our, you know, our next, our next steps and our readiness. So it's going to be um, the required health and safety measures, the LNI requirements, and then a matrix that really summarizes the rec, the uh, recommendations for provision of in-person learning based on those metrics. So that's a little dense. If you think that's bad, look at this next chart, the next slide. And so this is a summary of um, of what, of what is going on and what we look at. You'll see that it has education modality, so it talks on the left-hand side that, you know, here's what we want you to look at when you're in high. And you're, and you see that the high has changed to over three hundred and fifty cases per one hundred thousand in fourteen days. Moderate has changed to fifty to three hundred and fifty cases over um, in a, uh, in a, in the uh, in the, in the a hundred thousand parameter in fourteen days, and then low is uh, fifty cases, less than fifty cases. And so then the first line is really about education. What can you do? And so in that first one, with the high, we know that we can do, we can phase in-person learning in groups of fifteen or fewer students for pre-K through grade five. And they ask us to go slowly and to uh, to make sure that we uh, do a good job of uh, tracking to see what's happening and make thoughtful, relevant decisions around students. And you'll see the same thing in the moderate. It means that you can um, you can bring in more than just your um, more than just, you can prioritize your elementary PK. And then um, if they're not, if they're not already receiving in-person learning, you can look at the middle school. And then you'll see that below is provide in-person uh, learning for all students. So then uh, extracurricular activities, uh, basically in the high, we're canceling or postponing most in-person extracurricular activities, except for those allowed in the Safe Start Governor Proclamation, which is usually about, which is mostly about training. And then um, in moderate, um, they have guidelines that go with safety protocols, but it increases a little bit. And then uh, low, there's guidelines that go with each, but you can see that that's more of a, a green light. Probably that blue could have been green, and it would have showed what we're doing, that green, yellow, red, yellow and green. So, well, our guidelines is when the, the cases are flattening or decreasing, then we're, we can, um, we're just supposed to do everything we can to limit transmission, which means following the safety pro, protocols. And we can expand access to in-person learning, and that's exactly what our kindergarten efforts were this week. Small, only cohort groups A and B, and being very careful about uh, making sure that our little ones can wear masks and know what uh, distancing is. And we had good success with that this week. It's been, it's been uh, very gratifying to go in those buildings and watch our kindergartners. They're so glad to see that teacher in person. And then when the trends are increasing, then we need to pause that expansion. So that means stop and look, so that means that's why we won't move kindergarten to four days a week unless we see that uh, those numbers have reduced or that we can maintain the fifteen or below numbers. And then finally, that we totally look at any other risks. So um, I want, you know, I want our public to really uh, mainly see from this is that we are being very deliberate, very thoughtful, and um, moving slowly and watching and our learning from um, our colleagues and our uh, folks across the state and in other states that have been doing this well and are not, you know, are not increasing, um, you know, are watching for the risk of our teachers. That is important to us, teachers, teachers and students. Um, if you look at the next slide, so here's kind of the summary of uh, what's going on in Tacoma Public Schools. Uh, you see that three thousand eight hundred and thirty-six students enrolled in Tacoma Online. And we are still assisting parents. If you want to go to Tacoma Online and you know that you're, you know, you're a kindergarten first or second grader and you know, you're not, you don't want your student to be in the hybrid model, then please go ahead and uh, apply to be in Tacoma Online. There's, I, I hear a lot of people saying, oh, don't even bother because the waiting list is too long. That's not true. Uh, get your name in there and let us see what we can do. Um, our average daily attendance is eighty-eight point seven percent. So uh, we know we can increase that, but oh, you know, we're glad that it's in, it's in the eighty, eighty-eight, it's in the eight, at the eighty-eighth percentile. Um, we have, we know that people are working and are worried about the grades of their students, and so we just want to assure our families that if you have circumstances or you know your student's working, hey, this is the month that we really want you to work with your classroom teachers and your schools to look at grades. And our teachers are prepared, uh, you know, to provide teachers with, uh, our students with interventions and other things, extensions that can help them um, get, get on target. Uh, we still are gonna have our special education students, our uh, this students with disabilities that are in sped classes will continue in their small groups. And we could in um, expand those in-person days if it's appropriate, and that means uh, the metrics support it. Our preschool students are scheduled to begin in one to twenty, one twenty, on, uh, to begin on the twenty-fifth of January in cohorts. And our first and second graders will be next to return to school in cohorts scheduled by, for February eighth. Scheduled for, which means if it's supported by the numbers that we've seen and um, you know, and that we can do it in the small groups and meet the guidelines, we'll go forward. If the county numbers allow it, and that means, you know, that they uh, flatten out and they come to those rates, then we believe that maybe we could come back in a, uh, three through twelve, could come back in a hybrid model on or after three, one, twenty-twenty-one on the March first. And the reason we give this information is because we know families are, are making plans, trying to make decisions about what they're doing. And so we can't give you an exact date, but we can give you a date where we're expecting to move based on um, you know, based on what we see. Of course, if the, the metrics dramatically increase and they go back on that chart to increase on that, then it'll change our direction. Or if it uh, flattens out and decreases, so we know that so much of what we do as a community is going to help those numbers. There is a direct cor, there's a correlation uh, between our mask wearing, our social distancing, our, our behavior that will affect our kids being able to get in school. There's two other things that you, we want our public to know is that um, you can monitor your student grades through Schoolology. So look at it, it'll tell you, you know, tell you what you need to know. And then also um, that we are gonna ha, keep having secondary uh, grade calling. So we want to make sure that we are letting um, our parents know. So we want to make sure that we are letting our parents know what's going on with student grade. And so then now Dr. Garcia is going to tell you about these two changes that we've made. And we, we hope the public is watching again. This design was really looked at by our secondary administrators and make some changes that we think is going to, are going to benefit students. Josh.
Thank you Superintendent. So I just want to, we're looking at our secondary schedules changing the second semester. And why that's important is we're preparing for hybrid, although we have not established the exact date of when our secondary kids will come back. And so just want to talk to you about the changes folks will see. And this will start no matter what, second semester, no matter what. This was planned to start second semester, even though the date for hybrid has not been established, because we, we don't want to change schedules midsemester. So what we'll see is second semester, all kids at the high school. And this is based off of a six-period day. There will be some adjustments for schools that don't have six-period days and we will be communicating each school schedule to each school community. But what you see here is it starts with our typical, what we call, it's a historical term called WAC time. That's teacher time. And then all students would be in periods, will be in a cohort, a cohort A or cohort B. And they'll be assigned those cohorts. In the morning, think of it as a flip classroom. So all students would have be in a remote setting doing synchronous learning periods one, two and three. And you can see those times, so those would be regular schedules. And then there would be a teacher planning time, some travel time, a duty-free lunch, but there would be asynchronous learning activities. And then when we're in hybrid learning, there would be periods one, two and three for cohort A. And cohort B would be doing asynchronous time. And so what that would allow our teachers to do is do a whole group lesson and then do small group teaching in there. And then we'd end the day with our traditional WAC time or teacher time. And there'll be a lot of communications that will be coming out over the next few weeks to explain this, how it will work both from the school and from the district. But what this allows, and if we can go to the next slide, Tom. And a very similar approach, notice the minute, or the exact times change a little bit at a middle school level. And then the next slide, Tom. So this new model allows teachers to see a teacher five days a week. So twice in person with small group cohorts and then five remote various synchronous instructional days. There would only be, when we become face-to-face, there would only be two passing periods, rather than the full five, six, during a six-period day. It maintains the same three periods a day that we're currently using, less students and staff have to navigate on a daily basis. So we heard this from staff and students is, you know, having a full day is hard to navigate when you're balancing that between in-person as well as synchronous learning. It will align us with our current Schoology and e-school plus structures and IEP minutes. It provides more flexibility for lunchroom supervision. So allows students, when they come on campus for lunchroom, they will be able to be supervised in a more flexible environments. It does provide more small groups of students who are in the PM in-person cohorts. So when we do are allowed, when the numbers get down to that moderate phase and we're able to bring high school and middle school folks back into various levels, it will have more small group supports during that PM's time. Planning time in the midday allows teachers to prepare between synchronous, remote and in-person teaching. Students that come on campus in those cohorts will be more adjacent to the after-school activities, so they won't have to leave during that time. And then allows us to also do small groups in the morning as well for our most vulnerable learners. And then more synchronous time on Wednesdays for teacher contact. So schools will start to have more synchronous time on Wednesdays. Some schools that look different, thank you, Tom, that you see, you might see examples like Sammy Soda, Idea, Foss, Oakland, Geo Journey Middle School and potentially Bryant Middle School. And so those schools, their schedule may look different because they don't run a six-period day as it is right now. And so there'll be a modification of that. Next slide, please, Tom. So here's where we are right now. We are above 350 per 14-day case counts with the six-day lag. So we remain in the high category. So we still are in the, able to serve small groups. So even in our hybrid model, our students will be in small groups. And so we will look to operate in there for, until we're able to really move into the, into the low phase. And why is that? Because we have to do, practice our social distancing and our campuses aren't physically large enough to do all of our grade levels at once. It should be noted that, you know, we're not, just because we can come back on March 1st, we were, and we haven't made any final determinations. We may not bring all the grade levels back at one time in a school. We're going to work to, to develop models and support systems, the attestation process, to make sure that, you know, routines are established. And we have new groups of students like sixth graders and ninth graders that have never been on the campus. We do currently have small groups of students on campuses, so this would not necessarily be new. Next slide, Tom. Some other critical updates. We continue to pilot with our ELL programming. The first season of sports practices is scheduled at the high school level to be, begin on February 1st. We are actively working with state and county officials on the latest information and planning for both COVID testing and vaccinations. So we are continuing to move forward with those. Some staff have already begun to receive vaccinations and staffs are getting updates on how to access the information and notifications for eligibility. With our current numbers, we expect to give our kindergarten families an update probably in the next few days. So be looking at that, whether or not we can go to four days a week. We know they need some planning time, but we'll be revisiting those numbers tomorrow and making some determination about, are they going to remain in cohorts? Or are they going to go to four days a week? And so we'll be giving them an update here. And then just a reminder, if you're not feeling well, you, please stay at home. Even your kindergartners that are excited to be here on campus, if you, oh, practice that good social distancing, that masking up, and then follow that attestation process. And then one final plug, if you haven't signed up for the parent app, please sign up for the parent app. We're finding that that is allowing the attestation process in the morning to be a great gift. So we'll pause for questions at this point.
Thank you Superintendent Santoro and Dr. Garcia. I'll start with Vice President Bond Bright. Any comments or questions? You're muted, you muted yourself, sorry.
Sorry. Yeah, well, thank you both Superintendent Santoro and Deputy Superintendent Garcia. I thought you were both extremely clear and this was, I really liked walking through the new structure for the day. I actually looked at this when I was prepping for the meeting and, you know, really had to kind of look at it for a while to understand the incredible added value of the synchronized learning and that the, how much more time each, you know, kids would have with their teacher every day. So I really appreciate the long work that, that, that took to pull that together for the secondary school schedule changes. And I, I think it looks like it'll really work to have kids at home on their computers, but with their whole class in the mornings. And then moving to an afternoon where two days a week, they're actually physically coming into school. And that's, that just, it looks like that might be helpful to get kids re-engaged. I think, I guess I also want to point out the, the bit about grading to remind, you know, to kind of emphasize what you were saying, Dr. Garcia, about the, you know, work with your teachers. If your kids, kids' grades are, or if they're struggling, or if they're feeling like they're not understanding or they're not being frustrated about participating because they're falling behind, to make sure the teacher knows that, this is the time to do that. So I. And then work with the teacher. And I think, other than that, I think, I think it was great. Thanks, I have no other questions.
Thank you. Director, any questions or comments?
Yeah, thanks for the communication and explanation of really how we're able to provide the safe environment for our students and our staff. And that extends to, you know, folks at home too, if their students are safe at school and that can be picking up and transferring COVID, as long as all these precautions are followed. As we've talked about before, the studies show that if you do mitigate well, they transfer in school. So getting students back in front of teachers, you know, at the hybrid level. And then eventually, of course, we'll get to a full-time school at some point is, is going to be key to improving their education. So thanks for discussing that. The, the piece that I still want to advocate for is the start time. It looks like it's still pretty early at 7:45. There's not a travel piece there because that's remote. I do think it's still worth the thought process and consideration of sleep deprivation being significant for high school and middle school students and making sure that they, the evidence on studies showing start times 8:30 to 9 o'clock improves a less chance of depression, suicidal thought, improves grades, car crashes, those type of things. And for the general population, it, you know, improves memory cognition to have that proper sleep. So I think it's still something that we should consider for the future. So thanks for your presentation.
Thank you. Director, eating?
So let's see, what did I have to say? I had some notes, sorry. Yeah, thank you for the presentation. The comment I have, I know that we've gotten in a number of emails there and we continue to get comments about the board meeting virtually and bringing students back and people feeling that there's, that it's a sense of that it's irresponsible or I'm not really sure, there, there's just a sense that people feel that we're making this decision as a board to be meeting virtually. And today, we learned about, on the WASD call, we learned about the current OPMA guidance. And because of the, and I just wanted to share this with the public, that because of the legislature passing the rules that they did to start the legislative session, this, that no in-person meetings can happen until the emergency is declared over, which also impacts city and county governments. It's not just school boards, it's really impacting government, governmental bodies across the state. So there had been, I know that WASD was advocating for some flexibility, particularly for districts who are in the low, lower case rate category or phases. And the, because of the way that the legislature passed the rules, that my understanding is that there's no possibility for exceptions to that. And so it is per that ruling essentially illegal for school boards to meet in person. So it's not, it's not like an arbitrary decision that boards are making, but this is something that impacts school boards across the state. And I think that that's just, I'm hopeful that it will be helpful for the public to understand that we are being regulated by rules that are, that have been put in place at the state level.
Director, Director Stroper, any comments?
Yeah, real quick, just for, just for the sake of information sharing. Josh, you mentioned the, the parent app. Just, just in case there are some parents still watching, can you just point folks in the right direction on where to go to sign that up, sign up for that if they haven't?
You bet. You can go right on the website and sign up at your school. You can contact your school. You can go ahead and call them, they can email you. There's some tech support on how to do it. You know, with any technology platform, we recognize that it's new. It's new for all of us, but we're asking folks to get in there and prep it. You don't have to wait till your kids come back on campus, you can try. And it's a great way to get there. And so if all else fails and you can't see it right on the website or you can't see it where your school's website, please give your school a call and they'll guide you right there. We had some, we were out and our kindergartners in the last couple of days, our families were using it. If you forget, it's okay, we have some paper copies, but you do have to go through that attestation process. And our secondary folks, our athletes, they're getting a chance to pilot that at the high school level. We're still asking those high school families to go ahead and do that because that'll become a one-stop shopping place for you to get information in that parent app.
Thank you. I just want to go off Director Keating, Director Keating's office at OPMA just to say that I think that the context for our meetings virtually as opposed to virtual schooling, it's a little bit different. I think there is an educational imperative to try to get students back to school just from a social emotional standpoint and just from an access to a different kind of quality of instruction that we're able to deliver. I think the value add for us meeting face-to-face isn't really for us. It's really for the public and for the opportunity for you to give comment and to engage in our meetings. So we have transitioned to allowing public comment live. So please, if you're interested in contributing to our regular business meetings in that way, we encourage you to sign up 24 hours in advance for the meeting to offer your comments, because I think that is the biggest value add for us. We don't, we, we're not, we don't need to see each, we don't need to sit next to each other to conduct our regular business. So I think it's just a difference in the context. Also, we've got some pushback from folks about that 24-hour benchmark for submitting comment. And I just want to remind folks, because we have gotten so accustomed to everything being virtual and more kind of real time, we do have cutoffs because we want to post the agendas in advance. We want to have opportunity for board to review those comments. The person who has to receive the email and incorporate it into the agenda goes home at 5 o'clock. So really, we do need to get those in the night before so that we can get the agendas posted and ready to go for the meetings the next day. So yes, we know that we're virtual and we get emails all day long, real time, but we still have some timing issues that 24-hour timeline is meant to address. And Dr. Garcia, see your hand up.
Yeah, I just want to thank all of our staff. This was, there was a lot of work. Our kindergarten teachers just did an amazing job. The principals, the office staff, the custodian, our, we had our paraeducators, all of our labor folks leaned in. Our parents, I want to thank our parents. Our parents did a phenomenal job. You know, you're dropping off, some of our parents dropped off their kindergartners for the first time and maybe their only or in their first child. They did a great job of modeling and wearing masks. Our students, our kindergartners, they wore masks. They, they reminded each other to pull them up over their noses. The staff did a great job of helping kids with, that didn't have masks that maybe didn't fit right. You know, they were wearing gloves. It was a great team effort in Tacoma. This is not easy stuff. It is a lot of pressure and a lot of stress. And the staff did an amazing job the last few days and they're going to continue to do amazing job. And when the superintendent reminds us all that, you know, that we all have to do this, it doesn't stop when our kids leave school, right? Because the community transmission is happening. And so I just, I know that Carla and our conversations with the different board members, we're so thankful for all the educators, the bus drivers, the crossing guards that are all in there. Kids got home safely. It's a start, we're going to go slow and methodically. We're going to be ultra-safe the best we can. And, and it will be a team effort to do that. And so a big thank you to all folks involved. Nutrition services, you folks are heroes. And I, just because I don't mention you by one at all, it doesn't mean that you weren't chipping in in there. And including, and for those at home, our school board puts a heck of a lot of time dialoguing, discussing, looking at options, researching. And so a big thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. I feel bad now because I did have one actual question I should have asked it before you said all that you just said, but I'm sorry.
I'd like to take all that back and all wait.
I'm sorry, my one last thing. It was just, you mentioning your comment that parents of kindergartners should expect an announcement soon about going to four days per week. And my, I'm not a parent of a kindergartner, but my gut reaction was like, wow, we just started this week. How will we know so soon? So I know that you laid out all of what we're following in terms of the guidance. We're looking at the community transmission rates, but that felt fast. So can you speak to just briefly why? But that felt fast. So can you speak to, just briefly, why we'll be in a position to give that update?
So let me, let's just talk about that real quickly. Why, so uh, next week, our preschoolers will be coming back, but they'll be in cohorts. They'll be in the small groupings, right? And so they're gonna come back. Uh, we're planning on them to come back. And the plan was always to have our kindergartners spend two weeks in cohorts. And then if the numbers allowed us, we would move to four days a week. Now that would bring some of our classes above fifteen. And so right now, as we look at the county's numbers, and in order to give parents time to plan, right, we have to be in advance of that. And so we'll be looking at those numbers uh, in the next forty-eight hours, and we want to give families time to plan. And so if the numbers, and we look at it from a county, don't allow us to move to that whole group in kindergarten. Then what will happen is kindergartners will still remain in their cohorts, right? They'll still go two days a week in there. We'll still move forward with our first and second graders coming in February in cohorts. But they will not expand to the four days a week, right? And so that's a really a, a critical subtlety that we need families to understand. And we want to give them advanced notice as much as possible. Um, our staff are already there. They're there, they're four days a week. They're just working with different cohorts during that time. Um, and so, but we recognize with our families especially, if they need childcare, they need some lead time to that. So. We feel like uh, there were scheduled to be a week out, right? February first. Um, we need to make those decisions based off of those numbers. And so be looking for some communications coming in the next. I would say typically on a Sunday, they come out to our families um, with an update whether or not we'll have to wait. And we'll be looking at that kind of on a weekly basis. So it won't be, uh, you know, for here ever and ever. We'll look at it in there. So although the fourteen-day counts are high, um, with the six-day lag, we are seeing some positive trends in Pierce County that may allow us to do that.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Director Keating, I see your hand.
Yeah, um, Dr. Garcia, I know I asked this last week, but I was just wondering, just for the sake, because I know our audience isn't always the same. But could you talk about, I know there's been concerns about substitutes and how substitutes will be utilized if a T, a classroom teacher. Is out, like how, can you go over that again, just for the public's sake, please?
Yes, and so we've asked our substitutes to identify and, and really kind of uh, with a, a, a few schools, one, two, possibly three at the most. Where they are able to um, uh, stay within a certain school community, so they won't be bouncing from school to school. A lot of our substitutes will be staying with one school in there, um, in there. So that allows them to be a part of that school community. Um, and this is a great reminder for all of us. Uh, parents, you may see some friendly faces. You may see um, superintendent uh, on your campus. Uh, helping out in certain situations. You may see cabinet members in there. Um, there will be a lot of reasons why a, a staff member may not be there for a day or a period of time. Maybe they've been identified as a close contact uh, for someone outside of the school system where they have to self-quarantine. So we're all gonna work to make sure that we um, keep uh, as least amount of close contacts as possible. And be able to provide support to schools. Um, and so to answer your question, Director Keating, substitutes are asked to identify. A, a cluster of schools that they are only working with during this time to limit that interaction. My last comment to you is, is I was reminded today is, we all want to give hugs and fist bumps uh, as we see this. We want to give our high fives. Um, we're gonna have to practice that air high fives for a while, right? Uh, air fist bumps in there. Um, and so uh, just a reminder, if you're on our campuses, even the natural reaction of a high five has to be a, 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 in the air high five. Does that make any sense at all? Is that a new term, air high five?
Well, I appreciate that. And um, Dr. Bombright, or our Director Bombright and I learned today on the Wazza call that today is National Hugging Day. And um, we were instructed to hug those that are within our safe um, family units or cohorts. So um, don't. Don't not have hugs or fist bumps within your own circle. But. Today is, I did not know that there was a National Hugging Day, but apparently there is, and today is it.
And I would just remind people that uh, we can see your smile through your eyes. And so uh, you do not have to hold back smiles. Uh, even though you're wearing your mask, especially around our kids. Um, it's very important that uh, that they see that, that eyes light up. So. Uh, although we can't hug each other, uh, don't be stingy with your smiles.
Great, that's great. I, my, my favorite moment from the last couple of days is videos of the kindergarten returns of that student at Grant. And she's like, I'm a little, a little nervous or scared maybe. And so the follow-up was, why are you feeling, what makes you feel scared? And she's like, well, I've never been to real school.
I heard a little one say today's to a teacher. So that's what you look like in real life.
I love it. So thank you all for all the hard work. Um, I, again, I lost track of my agenda with all these windows open. But I think we've come to the end of our agenda tonight. So um, I just again appreciate the teamwork, appreciate all of you for. Continuing to show up on teams every week. I think we've had great attendance for this run of, of responding to COVID. So I just appreciate you all and the contributions that each of you make in your own ways. And with that, we are adjourned until we meet again next week for our regular business meeting. I hope you all stay safe and healthy and I'll see you soon.
Hi, thank you. Good night.
Night.